Jonathan McKay.
Here.
Michael Snar.
Here.
Bill Lierman.
Here.
Bob Osborne.
Here.
Michael Albright.
Here.
Nate Eglon.
Here.
And Matt Kirby.
Here.
All right, seeing everyone present, would you stand and join in?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you just join me in a brief moment of silence? Thank you. Under the President's agenda, the first item is the review and approval of the agenda. And I would like to make one change. I would like to move item F, which is the resolution 2245, under the Mayor's section so that he can get his things out of the way and we can get those folks taken care of, and then we'll move into that item. Any other changes or corrections to get added? Not an ask motion.
Move that it be approved as amended?
Second. Motion second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say a five, say a "aye". Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amended agenda is accepted. You also have before you the minutes of the September 15th meeting. What is your pleasure?
Move that it be accepted as presented.
Second. Motion second to accept the minutes of the September 15th meeting as presented. All in favor, say a five, say a "aye".
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are accepted. I also have a notice of legislative authority from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for the application of a new license for Yamoto Wilmington, 1362 Rhomback Avenue, Wilmington. That will be on file in the office of the clerk. Now, we have a public hearing, so I will open the hearing. This is for resigning of property located at 169 North South Street from DC Downtown Core to DT Downtown Transition. Is there anyone here to speak to that, or does anyone have any questions?
I'm here with my husband Alan Gino, speaking in favor of it.
And your name is?
My name is Judy Gino, and my husband is Alan Gino. We happen to own that piece of property, and I've had my law there for the last 20-plus years. And we're in the process of wanting to sell it, and when we placed it on market, or started to place it on market, we realized that it was on the downtown core, which meant that it couldn't be a single-family dwelling. And it's a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, possibly five-bedroom if you want to convert one of the rooms downstairs into it. It is perfect for a family residence. It has original stained glass, original fixtures. It's a beautiful home. So, we wanted the flexibility to be able... Oh, yes, it is for sale. We wanted the flexibility to be able to market it as a single-family dwelling, or it's a perfect office. Like I said, I've been there 20-plus years. It's a wonderful place to work. It's a beautiful building. It's in the historic district, rightly so, and it's a joy to go to work every day.
Thank you, Judy. Anyone have any questions or comments about this? Hearing nothing, I will close the public hearing. And then we have a second public hearing, which we will now move on for resigning of property located at 276 and 286 East Locust Street from TM Traditional Neighborhood to DT Downtown Transition. Is there someone here to speak to that?
Good evening. Katie Wilken from Kimmel Boy Law Office is on behalf of the applicants, LT Land Development. We're just asking that you accept the recommendation of Regional Planning Commission. This is being done both to match surrounding zoning that's already there, but also, there's also going to be a resurvey so that the parking behind the what's now known as Get Fit can be expanded, but also keep the two residences on the other street available for rental. So, if anyone has any questions on that end, thank you.
Anyone have any comments or questions? If not, we will close that public hearing. And that's all I have until we get through the Mayor's portion, then we'll discuss how it matters. So, Mayor Standford.
Thank you. First, something I want to talk about. You may remember back in late 2018, we had contracted with a company called Fallon to upgrade our water meters and modernize our utility building operations. And I'd come to my business in December of 19 with only about a third of the meters changed and none of the building improvements implemented. And Fallon failed to pay four subcontractors on our project. One of the subcontractors, a meter installer, sued the city in federal court for about $170,000, claiming that since Fallon couldn't pay them, then the city should have lied. And through auditor events and bond counsel, we were referred to very good legal firm in Cincinnati, the London Grove Law Group. They warned the city on Friday that we had won the lawsuit. Our lawyers suspected, though, at least some of the other unpaid contractors would have also sued if we had not been successful in this. And also, as an update, city personnel have installed all the remaining meters, and they're all operational. So, good job auditor event, you lead on the law firm. Good job, law firm. You won. I also have... Oh, Jonathan, you were gracious enough to give us these, but I couldn't see what time. It says...
Well, Shelby's here to speak on it.
What time is it then?
10 to 2. Entry timer every 15 minutes.
10 to 2. Great.
So, you call and get a reservation, you're assigned a reservation time?
Yeah, so pre-sale tickets end tomorrow at 4:00. If you feel like coming out Saturday, because it is going to be a nice day, a little chilly.
You may want to say, "What's the event?" Come on up, Shelby.
Sure. Hello.
What's our event we're talking about?
We are talking about walking tombstones, a living history cemetery walk at Sugar Grove Cemetery. This is our second annual cemetery walk, and it's the biggest fundraiser of the Historical Society so far. We... They sent two on Saturday. Pre-sale tickets close on Friday at 4:00, so tomorrow at 4:00. You can stop by the History Center or go onto our website, clintoncountyhistory.org, to get the tickets. Or if you feel like Saturday, you know, you have a free couple of hours to spend, you can stop by the cemetery and get tickets as well at the gate. You're going to see quite a few familiar faces as actors. Jonathan, Matt, and Mary Kay are all playing characters, so make sure you come out and see them. But it is a living history opportunity to continue education about our community, who's buried in Sugar Grove, and just the history of Clinton County. I think that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Shelby, I do have one question.
Yes.
Where did you get all these Dour Quakers? There's not a smile on them.
Yes, yeah, the camera took too long to take a picture, you know, a couple hours to expose.
Great job. Thank you, thank you for that. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at your code enforcement report, and continues just to do an outstanding job for us. And this board that she made up for me, it's so far away that nobody can see it, but I really wanted to look at the difference it makes when we go from this...
That one's right behind me. I know who's going to be talking about that one.
When we go from this to the... Now, I will also... Don't record this. And it is overworked. I never said that. So, if you see a violation, please inform her. You know, I saw some grass out on the Rhomback Avenue. This need to be done. She doesn't go around looking for violations. She has money to handle, but she will take care of them if you call in and say, "Hey, I saw whatever." All right, so goodness, help her out. Now, it is my great pleasure, Gary Huppenberger, please come forward.
Now, you're making the difference.
A little swap here, Gary. You're in front of the camera instead of behind it.
I feel more comfortable with it.
But after all his years of service to our community and for being an outstanding reporter, we just... I hate being second fiddle to county commissioners, and they had their meeting before me, so here I am, Gary. Whereas longtime Wilmington News Journal reporter and assistant editor Gary Huppenberger has been an integral part of Wilmington and Clinton County community. Whereas Gary is a Wilmington native, graduating from Wilmington High School, and then earning a degree in English from Wilmington College with the hopes of becoming a reporter. Whereas with integrity, a tenacious work ethic, an analytical mind, and excellent communication skill, he has used his gifts to bring us responsible journalism and feature stories concerning the Clinton County community for over 28 and a half years. Whereas Gary Huppenberger's last day at the Wilmington News Journal will be October 14th, 2022, and I think the open house is from 11:00 to 2:00. Is that right, Gary?
I just heard about that yet today. It's on Thursday.
It's on Thursday. Okay. Now, therefore, I, John, am stand forth by the power vested in me as Mayor of Wilmington, Ohio, hereby proclaim October 14th, 2022, as Gary Huppenberger Day. In the city of Wilmington, being known to all citizens of this community, that Gary will certainly do this for many, many years.
Thank you.
And as long as I have been on council, Gary was our reporter for several years, and I was always appreciative of the work he did.
Thank you very much.
Now, I would like to introduce Mike Shook, the Director of Oncology at the Foster Day Boyd. What is it, Foster Day Boyd?
Center. Absolutely. We also...
Mike, the board?
We also have Lance.
You want to introduce Lance?
Absolutely.
Want to come up here?
Yes.
Come on up. This is Lance, those that run the hospital. I'm sure we all know Lance.
How did you?
But they're going to discuss the break for breakfast. You guys have it.
All right, so Lance, views, really happy to introduce you to Mike Shook. Mike's been with us just under a year, and when you look for bringing talent to Wilmington, a lot of times we look at UC, who has big academic expertise and run a lot of patients there. We will get Mike, who has a huge amount of experience in radiation oncology, to come up and help run the center. And he's done an amazing job from customer service to physician satisfaction to real technical expertise. We're really lucky to have him. It's a big win for us to get somebody with that amount of experience up here in Wilmington to help our patients. I want to give a couple thank yous. So, this will be our 15th year for Break for Breakfast. We started 15 years ago, and we ended up 300 bags. For the last three or four years, we've been well over 1,000 bags, and we run out every single year. We continually add more, and we still run out. But it's been a wonderful thing. The big reason we do it is for awareness and to remind the women of our community to do self-examinations and get their mammograms. About two years ago, we put in a new mammography system, and it's 3D mammography. I am non-clinical at all, and I'll tell you, when you see a picture of a 2D mammogram with a lump and a 3D, I feel like an oncologist. It is so dramatic the difference. And so, we are able to detect cancers earlier and get women on treatment programs much earlier. So, it's a huge benefit to our community, and so thank you for all the support that you've given that program and the Break for Breakfast.
Mike? Oh, no, that's excellent. So, thank you for letting us come out today, and as Lance mentioned, this... Actually, tomorrow is our Break for Breakfast event. Very excited. We had nothing like that at UC, I'll tell you that right now. So, this is a very special event, my first one, so very excited to get up at 4:00 tomorrow morning. Probably 5:00. But as Lance mentioned, it is for early awareness and detection for breast cancer. And we have a huge group of people who are going to come out and support us and get the message out, so early detection does really save lives. We prefer to have no one come and see us, and we prefer no one to come and actually go through the treatment so we can catch it early and identify it and then stop it before it actually becomes an issue. That is our goal. So, we are very excited. About 30% of our patient population are breast cancer patients, so it's near and dear to our heart as well. So, please come out, support us, spread the word. We'd love to see everybody out there first thing in the morning and really bring awareness to this disease as we speak. So, we'd like to pass out some items to council if you'd like. Mugs are actually going to be for those who actually will receive a certificate, basically, to remind themselves to sign up for mammography, mammograms. So, when they go get their mammogram, they'll actually be given a mug. And about 15% of the people who actually come through actually follow through and actually get their mammography. So, love to continue that and actually see that trend increase. So, we'll hand out these mugs and also some awareness pamphlets as well.
And the mammography is paid for depending on your insurance?
Yeah. Every... I think every insurance product covers mammography, at least the routing screen is. So, very good. And tomorrow, if you want to bring your dog through, we will have dog treats. Very popular.
Yeah, if you want my coffee, I have plenty of soup or something. I mean, it's well...
Sorry. Hi, Ivan.
It is from 6:00.
6:00.
All right, very good. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, we're going to move on to item...
Item F. You want me to bring that up?
Well, first thing I want to do, I want to make sure that I publicly thank Sam Strachman for his service to our community for his years on the CBB Board. He was always conscious of how the taxpayer got it. Well, Spent, I really appreciate Sam's service. I hate to say it, but to replace him, I have invited Josh Engel to serve out the rest of Sam Strachman's term, which is a year and a couple months. And I've invited Josh up. Anybody have any questions for him? Here we are. Mr. President?
Did you want to speak briefly, Josh, or...?
I'm pleased to answer any questions that council has.
Well, and you know, there may be questions. Does anyone have a comment or a question about this?
Is this being replaced according to the bylaws of the CCB? Does it say in this? Because it's not written by laws. They're supposed to be a joint committee formed to make recommendations. Is this all done according to the bylaws of CBB?
I'm not aware of that.
Well, Mr. President, I can speak to that as well. Sam asked me to review the bylaws. And there are a couple provisions of the bylaws that address this. Article 3, Section 2 of the bylaws gives discretion to this council to appoint one member to the board, and that discretion is completely on this council. Article 3, Section 3, gives the current board the ability to suggest new potential members, but there's nothing in the bylaws that says that you have to wait on that to act. You have the discretion to appoint whoever you want to be that board.
Other questions, comments?
I guess I was contacted today by the attorney for the Clinton County Visitors Bureau, and so there is a discrepancy there related to the Article 3, where it says discretion of council versus the Section 3 appointments. At this point, it's kind of confusing. The Clinton County Visitors Bureau is indicating at this point, while they have not, I guess, suggested or put together to make a determination on that. So, the question becomes ultimately whether, I guess, Article 3, where the trustees, the general provision, when, at what's in the council's discretion, or Section 3, which requires the members of the board come together to provide a few names for the council to consider. So, is problem that to that extent? It's ultimately up to you guys what you want to do. I mean, he'd be a great candidate, absolutely. So, that is my only concern, and that was brought to me officially by the Clinton County Visitors Bureau.
Any other comments?
Have they presented all their names, or just...?
No, it's my understanding that the resignation, Mr. Strachman, who did a great job this morning. So, he has a chance to get that.
Yes.
So, what I'm hearing is...
Well, initially, she's right. He's not... Also, his resignation, my understanding, is that he's saying that he will vacate that position when another person has filled, which makes it kind of a catch-22. So, that's where it's all kind of a problem, I would say, actually.
John, you have a question?
Well, what I'm wondering is, I mean, since this has all happened, I mean, should we give the CBB Board a chance to have other candidates? I'm just asking a question. If that... I mean, Brett, that's what...
I think that was a CCBB's concern. However, I can only reflect what was indicated to me today, that's all.
From Blaze?
Yes.
Who is their official attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike, did you have a comment?
No, I'm trying to... I don't have glasses. I'm trying to read this on the phone. I can't hold it out far enough to hardly see it. I was kind of reading through Section 2, and I guess my question is, and maybe it's a question for Brett, I'm not sure, is there a distinction between... It looks like there's one member appointed by the Clinton County Commissioners discretion or one member appointed Wilmington City Council's discretion?
I'm not going to get into how these documents were created, whether they create probably some problematic inconsistencies, and that's why I'm doing here...
As the city is larger, though, I want to know, like, are we stepping wrong in this?
I mean, if the CCBB thinks that we're stepping wrong, then I think we should take that into consideration. I think either one of these... Like, no, one member appointed at Wilmington City Council's discretion here, and frankly, off the record, but not off the record, but I think ultimately... He's sitting in the wrong place to be off the record. So, I'm not... I'm not going to... I'm not going to position on that. Ultimately, I'm just telling you what the CCBB, their position is. I'm not saying whether this is written correctly or whether it should be drafted more concisely. I can't really speak to that.
And I don't want to put you on the spot. That's kind of what I was asking. Where do you fall on this as our legal counsel?
Well, ultimately, the issue is for CCBB, to an extent, you know? Whether they then perceive that or assume, posit that we are not following... How do we follow their bylaws? It's not our... Not a position to take.
Right.
But that doesn't... It then becomes the issue if the CCBB comes back and says, "Hey, we did not provide this information." However, it's not our responsibility or our job to follow their rules.
I do know that the Commissioners have presented candidates, and they have been vetted by the board, but, I mean, ultimately, they appointed. I did hear that, but...
Which would be a precedent for what...
Which would be a precedent. I understand that, and we've never...
I mean, John, but to that end, I think I know where you're going, which... This is the... In my seven years sitting up here, this is the fourth person, I think, that we've seen?
Right.
Well, there's never been a joint task force, but...
That would be for the initial appointment of the initial board members. The second... What you're asking is, there's ever probably been a more...
Right.
Like designation or nomination that came to you guys typically was done here.
This is the protocol of how we've all done it.
And if you follow that, so I think that's also...
Yeah. I mean, to me, this seems right, or we were unknowingly doing something wrong. I don't know the answer to that.
And I don't know the answer to that either. You know, we got to remember, too, that two of those were council people. I mean, we always did have a seat on the CBB Board with council, and then it was determined that we shouldn't do that, and then that's when we appointed whoever, then Sam. And by the way, John, we don't... I have nothing against... We're just trying to figure this thing out. I don't want... I do not want you to feel like we're not saying you're not a fine candidate. I do not want that to come across at all, or at least for me. I do not speak for the other six, but I don't want that to come from me. I'm just trying to figure it out.
And then, Mr. President, it's very hard for a lawyer to keep quiet about this. So, I'm going to offer my view on that, which is, there's a couple concerning things in these bylaws. And I think that when they use the term discretion to the council, they really meant to give ultimate discretion for the council to do whatever it thought was best. And I see this in two reasons. First, it's consistently the scheme that you have here, that you've got some public money going in here, and you really want public officials to be the ones who make the ultimate decision, whether that is based on names you get on your own or from somewhere else. And there's nothing in the bylaws that says, even if they give you names, you have to look at them. Second, I notice a real problem with these bylaws, too, which is that there's no conflict of interest operation in the bylaws. And so, you could end up in a situation where if you interpret it like... I'm hearing the CBB may want to interpret it to say that you're only allowed to consider names that they send up to you. They can send you names of people who have only a conflict of interest and say, "You guys are stuck with that person, and you have to use that person," and that's clearly not what is intended. So, the only... In my view, and I'm not your lawyer, and, you know, you get the legal advice you pay for, you're not paying to edit it. You take that for what it's worth. But the only reading of the bylaws that makes sense is that you can do whatever you want to do. If you like me, you want to put me on the board, that's fine. If you want to drag Sam back here and say, "Sam, you got to stay here forever," I guess you could do that, too. If you want to fit someone else, you can do that as well. But my interpretation of that bylaws is that it's ultimately your decision to make, whatever you want to make.
Yeah, let's get an example of why I like this, you know, why I presented for this position. And I think he can help give some things clean up, too, so we don't go through this on a second... I'm sorry.
So, in my opinion, assuming the CCBB has never objected to how we've chosen previous ones, even though we didn't wait for slated?
I believe they firmly objected here either, to the extent that the representative, Mr. Unwood, indicated this was a concern. I agree with everything he said, though, the only discrepancy I would say would be with the conflict of interest coming back is that you could ultimately deny any of those people, and they'd have to go back to drawing board. The point is, I think ultimately that this was not drawn up very well. And again, it's not our responsibility to comply with their understanding. If that will down the road make them, you know, come back and say, "This is not what should have been done," they can't... done. They can't, they can't force us to comply with their, you know, their provisions. So ultimately, I think it's your decision.
Forgive me for being, maybe not paying attention. There's no one here representing the CBB tonight. Okay, I just, we were talking about it, I'm like, I hope there's nobody in the crowd that's an agent of the organization, so.
Okay, so it looks to me like we're ready for a motion, if you agree, and we'll move forward to this.
I'll go ahead. I move to your first reading only of Resolution 2245 by Ty Longley.
Second.
Motion by Snar, second by Michael. May we, all favor second by, I say, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have one opposition. Motion carries. May we have first reading, please?
A resolution appointing Joshua Engel as the city's representative to the Clinton County Convention and Visitors Bureau and declaring emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give Resolution 2245 a second, third reading by Ty Longley.
Second. Motion second for suspension of rules. May we have roll call, please?
McKay?
No.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
No.
Perky?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two. May we have second reading?
A resolution appointing Joshua Engel as the city's representative to the Clinton County Convention and Visitors Bureau and declaring emergency.
I move to pass Resolution 2245 as read.
Second. Motion second for passage. Roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
No.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
No.
Motion carries both the same numbers. Resolution 2245 passes. And now we're moving on to other reports. Augur Vance. Oh, congratulations. Sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Augur Vance.
Nothing exceeding, Mr. President?
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Shattuck.
I just have one item exceeding, Mr. President, before I get to this lawyer's presentation. I know that we already did a proclamation, but Gary, I just wanted to tell you, thank you. You know, I worked at the prosecutor's office for almost 10 years, you handled the court cases, and then I've been here for seven. And first, I just want to say, I always found you to be very fair, I found you to be very impartial, I found you to have integrity, and I found that you always were seeking the truth in your stories. And I mean that 100 percent. And I really, really appreciate all of the work that you did over the years. And I'm sure I'm speaking on behalf of everybody else, because many of the people in here have worked with you longer than I've had the opportunity. But this is going to be a huge piece of our puzzle that we're going to be messing with before, with you stepping down and retiring, Gary. But I really appreciate everything you've done for the community.
It means a lot.
It means a lot to me. Because I always felt whenever you were doing an article, I knew that it was going to be the right article, and it was going to be, it was going to be fair, and it was going to be the truth. So you would always follow up with the questions, no matter how uncomfortable it would be. And I would say that you have a lot of courage, too, because even when you had the bad person in court, and they were extremely upset with a verdict, potentially, you had no problem getting right in front of them and taking a picture. You got a lot of middle fingers when you were in there. I got to say, like, you had a ton of courage in that courtroom, Gary. Like, I wouldn't have done that. It comes out with a guilty verdict, and Gary would get right there, and snap that finger right on that judge's head, and I'm like, wow. That's our reporter, so, thank you, Gary. I really do appreciate it. All right, we have one piece of legislation tonight. Mayor, would you like to have your floor?
What'd you forget her name?
No, did I get it wrong?
Laura Loggins.
Did I get it wrong? Laura, I got it wrong?
Shirley.
Save the radio business, take two.
I've got it.
All right, the mayor has the floor here. What am I going to do with her? You're going to dismount her.
Laura Loggins is our HR assistant, and she has gotten really involved in getting us applying for some grant dollars for our tree program. And Laura, we're going to turn it over to you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate you making that presentation.
I got a mouth with her.
About 45 minutes long. Two weeks ago, Mayor Sam Worth approached me and offered the opportunity to write a grant for, or write a grant application for an ongoing project of Ronback. So I would like to brief you very briefly about this project and ask you for your assistance with it. So there's an urban canopy restoration grant, and that grant is sponsored and paid for...
Slide it. Yep.
By the USDA Forest Service and administered by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. So I believe this grant started off as a way to replenish trees that were being devastated by the various four beetle infestations, but it's expanded into a lot more, and it's a national grant. So we're going to be looking to further the development of Ronback with this, and the monies need to be spent towards things that do such things as increased tree canopies, reduce stormwater runoff, assist with any kind of government or local, community-based tree restoration programs, and promote Ohio's nurseries and small businesses. So... My work is cut out for me, and I am enlisted at Ellen Sizer from the Clinton County Regional Planning Commission for assistance, because as you can see, we're going to be competing with Olive Region Nine, which goes from Minnesota all the way over to Maine, and as far south as Missouri. So it's really competitive. And the way we want to spend this money is on the mayor's project here on Ronback. It'll be from Bush Auto all the way over to Progress, where the new multi-use path runs on the south side of Ronback Avenue. I have to look at you to get this to them. I know. In case you're unfamiliar with Ronback, I know many people have avoided it over the past few years, but it's turning out to be a lovely project. So it's really nice. I walked that whole path the other day. It's gorgeous area, and it definitely needs some trees. I cannot identify these trees, but I do have a list for anyone who is interested. Junipers are one of them. So there's six different trees that we'll be using in this project, and I definitely stuck them to season and made it as colorful as possible. We're aiming for about, a tree about every 10 feet or so along that pathway. DNR's main focus on this is to increase outdoor activity so it fits with that parameter. It serves as a windbreak. The cornfield's to the southern edge, and then the street's up to the right, or to the north. So it will also remove dust particles and increase air quality along that area, and intercept water, so reduce the stormwater runoff. I'm a much better grant writer than I am Quiper. No, make it stop. Okay. So the details of the grant. It's a one-to-one. So the monies we've already set aside for this project will be paid one-to-one, our contribution, plus they're being very generous and allowing me to quantify the volunteer hours. So they'll actually be paying for a greater portion of this project than the city taxpayers will be. And this grant can run anywhere from $2,500 to $25,000. We're not going that high, but it will be somewhere in the middle. I have all the data collected. I just haven't compiled all of the labor costs yet. And I'm still working on the volunteer cost as well. So we've achieved most of our points that we need to submit. I've gotten a letter from Mayor certifying that he will be responsible for these trees for the rest of his life. I think it's just for one year. And then we have a letter from the Wilmington Tree Commission in support of it, and we've been working closely with the Tree Commission, and the mayor was kind enough to appoint me for that commission today. So what we need from you all is just an authorization for the resolution, and then I can submit this. We'll find out on October 27. So thank you very much for the, just under five minutes.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions, Laura?
Thank you.
Oh, we have a question about...
So exactly where does the tree line start on Ronback?
At Bush.
At Bush and on east and around, or how's that work?
Yeah, up to Progress Way.
Up to Progress.
Basically, those lines is one deal.
So is it between the sidewalk and the street, or on the...
No, between the path and the field.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question. As an agriculture, I do it from Wilmington College. I want, I hope that you guys take in consideration, like, your juniper that you were talking about. Is A, a fast-growing tree, two, susceptible to bedworms, and three, with your rock salt from the highways during the winter, will knock off that juniper really fast. Please take in consideration the trees that you put in there to what the soil types actually are, because it'd be a waste of time and money for you guys.
Thank you.
Yes, Paul?
She says the one-to-one grant, so if they approve $8,000, then we kick in $8,000 also.
That's right.
So they're asking for their approval to spend whatever money you're going to come up with, which you haven't come up with yet.
We're just asking the authorization to apply.
Oh, the authorization.
Yeah, just to apply.
Any other question?
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
Move to give Resolution 2243 a first reading by title only.
Second. Motion second, first reading, Resolution 2243. All in favor, second by, I say, aye? Aye. Any opposed? May we have first reading, please?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for funding through the Urban Canopy Restoration Grant Program and declaring emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and regulations and give Resolution 2243 a second and third reading by title only.
Second. Motion second for suspension of rules. Roll call, please.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for funding through the Urban Canopy Restoration Grant Program and declaring emergency.
I move to pass Resolution 2243 as read.
Second. Motion second for passage. Roll call, please.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
And Leirman?
Yes.
Resolution 2243 passes. Congratulations. You can go to work.
Nothing further, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I do have a question for Mr. Shattuck.
Yes.
How close are we on Ronback being done, though?
Very close, very close. Andrea, jump in if you want. We just had our progress meeting this week, and what's, small things are left. Before they synchronize the signals.
I think the AES...
Electric drop.
The electric drops, getting rid of the old electric, that we are at AES's mercy. Thank you. So, I mean, they're doing their final things other than that, but they can't do certain things until the old electric drops come out, like that intersection of David's and Ronback, where the corner is kind of messed up in front of Van Zant's dental office there. They can't finish the restoration there until they can pull the pole. They can't pull the pole until AES pulls the electric. So that it's just kind of, we're so close.
And they still have to replace the progress way sign?
Sure.
And they are well aware of that?
I do have something I want to bring up, because I almost did it. Explain to me the reasoning for no turn on red when you're exiting right in front of McDonald's, and you have the right of way to make the right, who to turn to, no turn on red?
No turn on red when you're coming out of the...
If you would go across, go to Generations, okay, getting back onto Ronback Avenue. Do we agree to that? Have you made that determination, no turn on red?
That's not a... Go ahead, Gary, I'm sorry.
I know. I mean, is it this, I'm just thinking, is the sign that lights up?
Why is there that sign that says, no turn on red?
But it's a lighted sign, so it's not all the time.
I drive it all the time. I sit, make a right turn on Ronback, I'm sitting while I was driving. And it's telling me, no turn on red. And the reason for that is, the traffic is coming out of Kroger's, turning around that road.
Yes.
And as soon as they no longer have the turn...
Your left turn.
Then that sign goes out. And then it's safe for me.
Does that make any sense? So when they have that left turn, green left turn arrow, it will pop up and say, no turn, right turn, to let them turn left. As soon as that left turn green arrow goes away, that sign that says, no turn red, should be going away as well, which allows you to then turn right on your own back.
It's just so, I don't right turn in front of somebody.
It's got the left turn arrow.
And if I'm not mistaken, the timing has not been finalized out here.
We don't have the final intersections.
So it's not really working as it will as a final product. We are still losing structure.
Brian? When you're coming out from, like, from the movie theater there, you're coming out of People's Bank, there's a sign there that says, no left turn, so that if you come out of People's Bank, you can't come to the left at all. You got to go all the way around and go towards the exit and restaurant to get out.
There's a lot of areas where there will be...
A lot of people are still turning left there, because they have been, because there were stoplights. Is that going to be an issue, or is...
That is an issue, yes. And that's something, when these lights get synchronized, and we get everything in place, that is something that I'll be meeting with Chief Fithin about, you know, as far as enforcement, because you're right, there will be additional no-left turn signs placed on Ronback Avenue. And I've seen it as well. A lot of people are making illegal left turns, and now it's, you know, it's up to the city to enforce, enforce the laws. So if people are making left turns, beware that you could be pulled over and taken there for those no left turns.
So how many of those left turn signs are going to stay up when this is all said and done? Because there's a few of them down through there, I think, are completely unnecessary, specifically out there in the Duden Dushes, trying to get out. I don't think those are necessary at all. But how many of those are actually going to stay up?
I don't know the number off the top of my head. There are several areas where there will be no left turns. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but...
Some of them still don't come down, or...
Not necessarily, no. I don't, I don't know, not necessarily. And there would be people, safety engineers, that would disagree with you that it's unnecessary. They would say it is necessary for safety concerns. So that's something that we debated for two years, two and a half years, about the no left turns on the Ronback Avenue. That was the big issue that we were having on Ronback Avenue for safety reasons. So you can say it's unnecessary. I can promise you, there's people that would disagree.
All of the turning in the middle of the lanes, though, for older people is so confusing. I mean, it is absolutely confusing to people.
It's just signage and striking, I don't know.
I understand, but for years, it was just, you can left turn, right turn, however many you want. But now, you know, sometimes, when you get into a turn lane, it's like a one-car lane or a two-car lane, depends on where you're going. And so you've got people holding that traffic, wanting to get in that lane, because, you know, they're traveling down the two-way, wanting to get over, but there's only one car right there, and they can't get over. So it is problematic, very problematic, and especially with older people. I have an 87-year-old father, and it is, you know.
No, I appreciate, there's, I mean, there's certainly a learning curve. I mean, we don't have roundabouts in the city. Wilmington, other communities do. And I hear that all the time, like, this is extremely confusing, that we don't know how to do it. And then all these safety studies come out and say that roundabouts is like the new wave, you know, for safety and stuff. Wilmington's not there yet. But there's a learning curve when it comes to catching up with studies, you know, studies and accidents, and seriousness of accidents and stuff. And we're trying to get there. Education's got to be a piece of this. better job of that, but this is the way to move forward, this is progress, and I think, I, I feel very strong about the improvements on Rombach Avenue, I think we're headed, certainly headed in the right direction with what we're doing.
And I think we've, if you don't mind, I think we've also always said, as we were developing this project, that as it gets completed, we're going to keep close eyes on really what's happening out there, to make sure it's working okay, and we'll be flexible if something isn't, you know, that, but we're putting it in like the engineers have said, this is the best way to do it, but if something absolutely, we can see clearly it's not working for us, we will change it.
Absolutely.
We don't want anyone to say...
More of a safety concern, that's certainly addressed, yeah.
I, I think I know where you're talking about, and what it is, there's a left turn lane, like, going eastbound on Rombach, that is only like one car or two car stacking distance for that left turn lane, and I think what I'm hearing Brian and Andrea saying is that maybe if we see that's a continuing problem, we can extend that stacking, you know, so you get three or four cars in there maybe, if necessary, but some of those things, I think we're just going to have to, have to work through it.
Sure, yeah, I agree with you, Councilperson Engel, but also, the, the lights, the signals have not been synced together yet either, and maybe that would help alleviate that as well.
Another thing that we've talked about a lot, and as you alluded to, this has been years in, in the making project, is that we lean heavily on funding from the state, so if, if we're taking state money, we gotta play by state rules. I remember when we put the, we were talking about the crosswalk in front of Derek Queen, if you want to cross a five-lane road at 35 miles an hour, this is what's required, so a lot of the improvements, we opted to take medians out, that doesn't negate the fact that there are safety concerns with the left turns, so even though there's not a median physically restricting your left turn, that's still, the engineers are still saying you have to restrict that left turn. So, and, and we brought it up a lot, but I wanted to say it again, because it, it does, frankly, we paid for this project because of, because of the help from the state, and for that to happen, that was, we're required to comply with the current traffic codes.
So I have to ask about South Street, are we still waiting on parks?
We're waiting on the hurricane damage, that's a light.
That is part of the daylight right now. We're close on South Street, too, as you can, as you can see, the poles and the signals are, are installed, and I think...
Once again, it's the same issue, same power company, same hurricane work that's being done.
I can buy that.
And, yeah, there's just...
We are holding their feet to the fire, we're, we have a deaf ear for their...
And Mulberry, Mulberry Street, we're expecting that to be completed by the end of November, end of next month, so that's, that's working, actively working as well.
Thank you. Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
How about Wall Street, how's that, how do those cars come along, getting those off the fence?
So we, we are planning to move those, are you talking about the vehicles that are storming water?
Right, for them, for the, and cars, I'm sorry.
Correct. I was contacted by the contractor for the fence company, we are moving those behind the safety center, but we needed to build a secure fence behind the safety center.
Right.
The contractor, whether permitting for the fence company, is supposed to install the fence next week, so that's moving along, and hopefully we'll get that moved in the next week or two.
Because I've been getting a lot of calls on that, and I know you do, I just wanted to give that, thanks.
So I was waiting on the fence company to get there, next week is when they're supposed to install the fence.
Thanks, Brian.
Yep.
Mr. Shatter?
We do have the cemetery bridge out to bid, so we are...
Will that be fixed by Saturday?
So we are, we are actively receiving bids for the cemetery bridge. What's that, do you have that off the top of your head, off the top of your head, do you have that?
We extended it out, I think it's like...
End of November?
Yeah, the Thursday, the 27th is that a date?
Will be the, yeah, it is, it is out there for bids, because we got the environmental stuff done, so that's out to bid right now, and we're receiving bids on the cemetery register.
You got it. All right, hearing nothing else, I'm going to be naming council committee reports. City Revitalization Committee, Mr. McKay.
No report, Mr. President.
And I think you might have been instrumental in bringing the hospital people here.
Yeah, I was, I wanted, I thought that was a important program, and, and we wanted to make sure that we, we highlighted that program. I, I do have, I guess I do have something, not that I said I have no report, but I don't have any official report, there was an economic development meeting, I know that Beth has been instrumental in that with the airpark, some things have been discussed, and as, as we move along, I want to, Beth, I want to talk to you about it, then maybe we can bring some things to city council, and I, I suppose it'll come out of my committee, but we'll, we'll have some discussion about some economic development things coming along, but we have quarterly meetings out at the airpark with some, some good folks, and I know that you guys are working hard out there trying to find a director, and also the Economic Development Director, so that, that is not falling on deaf ears, it's just a matter of getting in applications, and it's just a slow process for you, so we, we respect that, and we know that we're a player in it, and we want to, you know, respect the process, so, but down the road, we'll have some, we'll have some fruitful discussion about economic development coming down, coming down the pipe in the next few weeks, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. City Services Committee, Mr....
Nothing received, Mr. President.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mr. President, we have two items this evening, the first is three readings on 23248, which are making supplemental appropriations, there's 10 of them, they're listed on your summary of finance items, we had a committee meeting this evening to talk about some of the pricier items on the supplemental appropriations list, so if you have any specific questions on any of these 10 items, I will do my best answer them, but Augur Vance or Safety Service Director Shatter might do a better job than me, but any specific questions on any of these supplemental appropriations?
Just one quick shout-out to, I guess, to Andrea, when you send these out with the explanation in case, that helps, that's big for all of us.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Andrea.
I agree, yes. Aside from that accolade, any questions? I agree with that 1,000 percent. All right, seeing none, I move to give a first reading only on ordinance 2248 by title only.
Second. First, well, right, second by Snar, first reading ordinance 2248, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
I notice the rules and regulations, give ordinance 2248, second and third reading by title only.
Okay. Motion second for suspension of rules, roll call please.
Albright.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Perky.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Perky.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Perky.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Ordinance 2248 passes.
Our second item is those three readings on 2249, supplemental transfers, we have, we have four of those this evening, were there any specific questions after the lovely summary from Clark Taronte, any specific questions? Seeing none, I move to give a first reading only on ordinance 2249.
Second. Motion by Albright, second by Osborne, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
In ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
Move to suspend the rules and regulations for ordinance 2249, second and third reading by title only.
Second. Motion second for suspension of rules, roll call please.
Perky.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
All in favor, may we have a second, third reading, please?
In ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
Move to pass ordinance 2249, that's right.
Second. Motion second for passing ordinance 2249, roll call please.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
And Perky.
Yes.
Ordinance 2249 passes.[1767.12]